Welcome to the special call meeting for the tenant, uh, for the approval of renewal of resolution clearing local state emergency due to hurricane event. Before you have an updated resolution that we need to approve, is there any discussion?
None.
Just the motion to approve?
Absolutely, sure.
Uh, no, I just, it, I think I've spoken with everybody individually, but the differences between this resolution and one that you guys passed earlier in the week is it specifically authorizes the county administrator to act as the agent of the county and it authorizes him to sign contracts on behalf of the county during the pendency of the emergency for obligations that the county is going to incur related to the emergency because we can't meet every time a contract needs to get signed and the purpose of the emergency is to waive all those formalities. So, and then the other thing it does is because of the nature of Swan County and most of the damages, we're all aware, due to downed trees and damage to roads which is keeping people trapped, it authorizes the county to go ahead and repair public and private roads as may be necessary to protect the life and property of citizens of Swan County. And it's also making a finding that those expenditures are necessary for a valid public purpose during the emergency to allowing the citizens of Swan County to travel safely throughout the county, most importantly to their homes, businesses, and places of worship. And it makes it
Retroactive.
Retroactive to the date of originally passing the first resolution because technically everything is an extension of the original declaration of emergency.
Any questions?
None.
I believe I have a motion by Commissioner Perkins.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lamb. All in favor, I?
I.
I. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, Ms. Is there anything else to discuss while we're here?
Brooklyn's good. Want to talk about scheduling?
Uh, yes. Um, let me go with that.
Alright. So, we got three meetings technically next week. Um, we've got our regularly scheduled county commission meeting on Tuesday. We've got our budget meeting on Thursday and then, as you guys are aware, these resolutions are only good for seven days, so we have to, and it's, we're gonna have to renew it looking at the extent of the damage. I'm not a policymaker, but I'm hazard a guess. Um, so those are three things that are technically separate which have to be done. So here was just my two cents and I was talking about it with Greg. The one meeting which is immutable and must happen at that day and time is the Thursday meeting on the budget because that's been advertised, the statutes are very clear on that, we're meeting on Thursday. So my thought process was, especially given the state of things now and to give citizens of the county more of an opportunity to just get their affairs in order if they wanted to attend, is not have the regular meeting on Tuesday, reschedule that to Thursday and then let's go ahead and we can address the declaration of, renew the declaration of emergency at that time too and then renew it on that Thursday instead of waiting until Friday and, you know, the less, you know, it's a pain in the butt to get everybody together all at the same time and have to do it three times next week seems unnecessarily burdensome. So that was my thought process as to scheduling, but the Thursday's the one meeting we're having it. It can't be
What was it scheduled for?
Thursday next week, 5:30.
5:30?
I'm good moving at all of that.
So we're gonna move, if I'm clear, we're gonna move all that together in one meeting?
We maybe want to start earlier, for example, on the normal meeting, but I'll leave, that was Greg's thought.
This is kind of thought, if, if we want to start earlier, you know, we have a curfew, so, um...
4:30?
So...
4 o'clock?
Give us plenty of time, I think, yeah, this, short agenda, Manny?
Uh, kinda sorta, yes.
Yeah, nothing really to...
Anything controversial on there? That's gonna require a lot of public?
No.
4 o'clock? Nothing, it's fine, 4 o'clock, there's an...
We have the two public hearings, just to do the final for the fire and solid waste, but that's the only problem.
And Manny, if you could just go ahead and add to the regular agenda for that Thursday, renewal of the emergency declaration and that can be handled as part of that.
Yes, sir.
And then just to brief everybody else as to what I'm working on is I got two things in the works just while we're here. Uh, I've spoken with a couple of y'all and ordinance to have in place when our emergency declaration is made.
Can I ask you, um, because we had to advertise to adopt fire and solid waste resolutions that are on this agenda that were advertised for 5:35 for Tuesday. How does that matter?
I thought that was Thursday is the budget.
It's Tuesday.
It's on the agenda line for resolution notice.
If it's a resolution, we can just move it to Thursday.
Okay, even though it had to be advertised?
Yeah. Worst case scenario, we'll just postpone the door and reschedule for that. It's not a big deal. Um, ordinance isn't a agenda or a resolution. But anyway, I'm working on an ordinance which will basically have a series of powers because an ordinance has a force of law as compared to the resolution. Gone over it, but I'll have more in store on that later to discuss with y'all and also some land and stuff. And that means meeting again, huh? Um, I don't have anything else.
Just wanted to give a little update on where we're at on storm wise. Um, the, um, so...
We're still in the meeting.
Yeah, we're in the meeting.
Still in the meeting.
If we ain't got no other business, we can move into the meeting. Is that everything with the, with the ordinance?
With the ordinance, we're in the meeting. Yeah. We'll, we'll just go off when we adjourn the meeting. I guess we're all together, so we need to, you tell me.
So long as it discusses business that's not gonna come before the county, if you're gonna talk about things that happened in the past.
Right, just past them.
Nothing that's gonna come before
Just update, whatever else is going on.
Just, yeah, the road thing's already handled, that's good.
We adjourn, then I'll turn it off.
Yeah.
You need a motion to adjourn.
I get that, but before we get that far, uh, go ahead, Greg.
I wanted to bring up something. Go ahead, go ahead, and before we adjourn, I wanted to just make sure, I need, let me, let me do an update during the meeting, uh, so just get your mind.
Well, you know, I've got a phone call from Washington that, uh, President's gonna be here tomorrow. I, I need to know what y'all want to do.
Where?
He's flying in.
Where you headed?
He's flying in here first. We understand that could change, always does. Um, but from there, I'm assuming EOC or somewhere that looks disastrous, um, which can be much anywhere. Um, but I, I have not heard what the plan is except for Orlando here.
They won't give me a time yet. They won't tell me. I've got a guy from Washington DC calling me today and told me that they were coming and pretty much told me they were gonna come to Live Oak. It was subject to change, but could happen. Don't know what time, don't know.
I'm thinking early afternoon.
So...
What do you want, what do you mean as far as like where we want to do?
Do you want to, we want to be here as a group, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Well, it is a matter of me.
Or do you just want to show up? I'm just asking.
I mean, it doesn't matter to me. I mean, the biggest thing, I just want to just take care of our community. I'm not, I know we talked about getting around the cameras and all that, but these folks get tired by the way. That's what these folks need.
Well, that's what I'm worried about, you know. I just, when the guy calls me back, I gotta, I gotta say something.
Was that what he wanted? Was he trying to get you to organize?
Well, he wasn't trying to get me to organize, he was just notifying me that they were coming.
I got you.
And so, I, you know, I don't want to be the only one standing.
No, I will support you on that. You, I'm there, you're gonna be there.
You're right, you're there. But, you know, I'm not great, but I think you have to get someone, where's the area?
So I'll just use the group connects to notify anybody as much of the information as I get. I'm just, I just want to put it out there for y'all. Let them know what's coming.
I think I kinda agree with, with Dawn there that, I mean, well, would it be cool to meet the President of the United States?
Yeah.
Other more important people that are needing me and need my help right now, today, that, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah. But definitely, it's President of the United States, so we need to roll out the carpet for him and welcome him to our community, make him here to help us, but as far as trying to organize a meeting
I'm not doing that. I mean, if they want to show up and we do it, that's fine, but...
If I'm around Live Oak and somebody needs a commissioner and I'm available, I'll come, but if I'm out in Louisville, sawing trees...
Well, let's just leave it at that, as I get more information or Greg gets more information, we're straight out on the dirt, text for it.
I mean, I'm not being over, but you know how that stuff is, you have to wait around sometimes two or three hours, something like that, and right now, just don't know if we have that time.
I don't need, I mean, I got, I got places I need to be.
If I'm around town and available and somebody needs me and none of y'all are available, I'll come, but chances that happens right now don't look pretty good. I mean, we got
Well, we can just leave it at this, whoever can come, if you're available, we'll do it that way. If not, I will try to make sure that I am at least here to, uh, to do it. Uh, if you can, if you're able, just show up.
If I'm in town, yeah, I know, if, it's all about the time, you know? If it's eight o'clock in the morning, I might be a little more available, but by three o'clock in the afternoon, it's gonna be chaos everywhere.
Yeah. So I just want to bring the, uh, before you, Greg, if you want to...
Thank you.
It's also college football.
You get TV?
I don't even know what the day, the day is.
I understand.
Anyway, that's, anyway, um, just to give an update, what we're doing, uh, we've closed the offices, um, until Tuesday. People, a lot of people can't get in, I mean, it's like new, you got, it's out there. Um, we still got public works staff obviously working out in the field. We got public works or administration office, people working in the office, um, doing what they're doing, actually following directly, taking issues, that's worth a thing. Um, I've got Meeks, Norris, and Cory at the EOC with me most of the time. Shannon's there in the evening also. We've done this kind of tag team of who's somebody's been there all the time. Um, and as the days get on, we'll try to just, I have this all there, but everybody's working on their own different projects. Uh, Norris has been asked by the governor's office, which is the chief of staff, is now transitioned into, um, Department of Commerce that wants to know about businesses, what's open, what's closed, and why. Um, so they're working on that, Ron's helping with that, Chris is working on that, others will do some foot traffic trying to see what's safe and what's not. Um, the, um, the public work guys are, we stood down for the most part on Wednesday because of the search, search and rescue mission, um, with National Guard and others. Um, we started yesterday early with clearing of the roads. Um, you know, what we're doing is just opening roads up, not removing anything, just pushing out the way so people can get to and from. Um, we haven't got everybody yet. Um, the Dillon Park, Louisville area, probably the worst from what we're hearing. Everybody, I mean, I mean, everybody's gathered, everybody's gathered. Um, the guys have been working hard. Um, we got coordinated to have, for the county, county, um, schools there, the sheriff's office employees, the EOC, old EOC, but, EOC that we're not using. Um, the, um, showers, bathrooms, and, um, three meals a day, hot meals a day, there's some staff, staff is on the timing and that kind of stuff. Um, all that's paid through the FEMA or the state, they'll pay with the full tab and all that. Um, we've got set up for up to a thousand, which we won't be that expensive for a basically little city with showers and rooms, we'll kill, you know, bunks, six, six people bunks, um, uh, the high school, uh, they'll do laundry, feed them, that sort of thing. Uh, we had, had a totally operational yesterday, will be operational today, um, we had a little short name of the bunks. Um, the, um, we've got distribution centers at the Coliseum, Riverside, doesn't name it, well, Walker Street Elementary School, um, Old East School, I guess, um, and also the, uh, Branford Elementary School versus High School.
That's the elementary.
Elementary School. Um, we've got chucklers of ice coming in today or tomorrow, first thing, at daycare locations. Um, we got, uh, advocacy village has issues with water tower and the draining, uh, last night, I guess, or today. Talked to Craig this morning, we've sent him five pallets of, well, he asked for one, we sent him five, but three showed up. So I don't know the details of why we were, they got more than what they asked for. Um, the, um...
On the ice, Greg, when that shows up, is that gonna be a reefer trailer that we get to hold for a while or we gotta do something with that ice or?
Well, distribute, distribute it, ask people come to get it.
But they're gonna leave the trailer there while we distribute it?
Right, they have to, yeah.
Okay.
Um, the, um...
What time is that, Mark? Do you have a timer?
I do not.
They, they, it's been a thing with, uh, they've lost three trucks of ice. They can't, don't know where, but they got more coming, but it's just a guessing game all the time.
We had one truck that went to Orlando, delivered an empty trailer, that came back to Branford, it was empty, uh, or two, but that was all gone. Um, but the overall, we've got a lady there from San Rosa County that's running the show, uh, from this, helping the state side of things. You know, Chris Volz is running the operations, the insta commander, uh, doing a good job with that, asking for things. Uh, we've been in contact very heavily with the sheriff's office and senate's office. Uh, they've been very instrumental in getting some things done. Uh, we had an order for hundred law enforcement, they got canceled, we re-asked a couple of times, uh, when we couldn't get them, we talked to sheriff's office, uh, in about an hour and a half, the head of, after he walked in with his entourage, said, "What do you need?" Uh, because, you know, the sheriff said, "I'll handle it." Um, talked to Corey this morning, I'm sorry, Senator this morning, and, um, he said, "Where you need, let me know." He's been saying that the whole way, he was here yesterday. Um, and, um, he said, he talked to, um, Kevin Guthrie, I get the name right or wrong, but, um, he's the head of, of FEMA or the state emergency management. He, the message was, "Whatever we need's a green light, we don't want to pay for anything, so where we want, order now and get, get a roll of them." Um, so, um, yesterday we met with sheriff's office and the conversation was, um, it's mutual aid that's here and you'll see Metro Dade, you have Pasco, the presence from them, so we got almost everybody that does this stuff and sends people anywhere here helping us. I don't know what the counties are doing, because it looks like everybody's here.
Yeah.
But, um...
I seen dude walk down here all in the way. Southern Miami D truck.
Right. So we got them stationed in different places. Um, one thing you'll hear, um, and we had to pull our, our fire guys and put them in shelters because none of our facilities would handle the, the wind load. You're gonna hear that, but it's real, so we need to think about that going forward, not necessarily today or next year, but at some point down the road, we need to understand if this happens again, we need to think through that differently. Um, or have a plan. The biggest thing that I see that we miss the ball on, and I put it on me, and that is our employees, our public works employees and other employees, um, if we expect them to come in, we gotta make sure they can get here. Uh, so we need to have housing for them, you know, during emergencies and the families so that we can take care of our own, so if we need them to work, they're here to work. Um, our new shelter that we'll be building, the COVID building, there'll be a shelter. We're hardening it, so we'll have that facility that we can do that with and take care of our own, uh, and we should handle fire rescue there also if we choose to. So that'll handle both needs. If, if, in theory, it'd just be one location of fire rescue, but that'll be things to address down the road.
Sure. One of, just an idea, and one of the places I've seen in other counties that they've done, this is the big one that's come through in all of our lifetimes, is it may be worth having a workshop two or three months from now, just a postmortem of what can be done, what should be done differently, structurally, where should we be, and just, and also give the community an opportunity to come in and say, "Here's what they saw us doing or not doing." But that's gonna be an idea.
I mean, I've seen everybody's done a pretty good job so far, this few that's here and there, but there's some things to address for sure afterwards.
Two things that, thing we need to do is do an immediate kind of triage, kind of, kind of look at things as, as far as the operation things, what we hit on, what we missed on, and then come back and talk a little bit deeper dive into that whole, what that looks like. Um, maybe we need three different meetings that we have to talk about. We need to engage the public, we need to include all the stakeholders, need to make sure that everybody is engaged in that conversation. Um, when we, with the personal rules, Manny, correct me when I say it wrong, um, in personal rules, we have a disaster, uh, and we're declared, and we are declared federally and the state also, which means everything is written off, all our category, I can't remember the name of the, the category, the category of fixing, you know, doing the cleanup and preparatory things, all those things are covered 100% through FEMA. Um, so what has been done generally in the past, or traditionally in the past, is those people that are, that, when I close the offices, they're gonna get paid the regular salary, those that are working will get time and a half. Is that what's written on the policy sheet?
Um, that part I don't know, as far as that, I don't know what it's written up.
That's my understanding.
Yeah. I think that
But, um, that's, that's kind of the thing we're operating on now. Um, the way I look at that is, you know, the, people could be saying, "I, I might be I feel pretty good, I don't want to get out here and get in the middle of all this," but, um, people, we haven't had anybody say, you know, had any hiccups on showing up that could get here. Got a few guys that just couldn't, we had a guy from Landville, his house got crushed by a tree, we know insurance. Um, everybody's safe, all our employees are safe. Um, that's an important part, but, um, but, you know, that's kind of where we are with that. If you have other feelings, please share with me.
I just have one announcement, I don't know if you covered it or not, but, um, they do want the word to get out, uh, family, the Department of Family Services, the staging at the library
Okay.
Um, to handle, I guess, anything that people would need government wise, FEMA or whatever. So, uh, they are set to start operating tomorrow at nine, uh, but we're still working on getting out and taking out
Is that Small Business Administration group or is that somebody else?
This is the state.
Okay. Okay, so I left a while ago, I had a meeting, um, with, with FEMA people about how we want to get the word out to the community. And my thought was, we need to set up something in Live Oak, I thought about Exhibition Two, Library may be a better place, but Exhibition Two and then also the Branford Community Center. I'm not, didn't get ahold of the Branford folks yet, but to me, that's a central location for, for both. Um, and then, when we can get power, everything, other places, we thought about, I'll pick on Larry, is Larry Sessions jail with the public works with the city, uh, and two FEMA people and Katie with San Rosa County, they said, "What do you want?" And we were talking about, um, maybe going to Wellburn, Dillon Park area, Louisville, you know, kind of spread out so we're having satellite places around if people can't get into, to Live Oak and Branford. That might have got people ruled by, um, by FEMA, I don't know yet, but I heard that in passing, but I was running out the door. So the idea is making sure people know where to go to get assistance and, uh, it'll be, we'll talk to the Small Business Association also, um, it's an offshoot of that. Um, the SBA is, when Debbie came, I got a loan from them, low interest loan to, to do building my daughter's house and my son's apartment. So, um, so those kind of things that are available to people that, that, you know, either have insurance or whatever. Um, I'm chasing rabbits, I know.
Have y'all, just something about going out to community like that? We was talking, I was talking to Shannon earlier, didn't mean to just jump in, but I was talking to him about the MREs and, and border and things like that. We just got a handful of locations, so just can pick that up at, but we all have, you know, churches in our community. Maybe, usually a big part of lots of places getting and out. I thought maybe if we could get some of that, you know, product out there into our, each one of our districts, into those communities, because you got four or five communities in each one of our districts that have churches, maybe that would be, people recognize that for that community. If you say this church or that church and it's in their, their area, they know it.
I think getting where out through the churches is critical, that's a big source of communication. Um, logistically, we, we talked about earlier before I left, about maybe, since we heard this from Guthrie earlier, that now maybe we could open the door a little bit, um, and look at other communities. Part of that comes to logistics of, of making that happen. Think how, how our folks, if somebody's getting passed out, traffic flow, security, all those things.
Load and unload.
If we, yeah. So if we got, if we got the resources to do that, which they say what we can get is that is, we will work toward that. Um, I don't know what that's gonna look like, but I think communication to the churches is gonna be critical, letting them know where things are happening. There's some sheets somewhere that's got, got that listed. Um, I lost my train of thought. Um, I'm gonna hurry up and ask questions and read.
Yeah, I wanted to just give those out.
I've got a stack in my truck, yes, sir.
What's that?
The biggest thing I, I see is the communication, um, because of the phones, downloads or, you know, emails sporadic, and the whole thing is like, um, hopefully y'all made the asking if you had a chance to talk to the governor. What was your little update of that conversation? I mean...
Well, it wasn't really a conversation, they had us about two seconds asking for what we wanted on, we got away for a press conference and me and the sheriff brought it up and asked for the National Guards people to man these pods, if you will, or expanded pods, and also for the broadband stuff, get the internet connected back quicker and, uh, we'll see.
I think broadband and cell phone service, expedite, expedite, expedite.
Well, that's kind of what we were after.
I mean, I just took a picture of this so I could post it to social media and try to get it out that way, but you can't. But when I can, sooner than I can would be better because, I mean, nowadays, social media's
Well, that's the reason for this right here is, I went to Branford this morning and then with many cars coming through and I'm realizing nobody knows where to go, you know, that nobody knows. We're in the stone age as far as communication goes right now and they're, they're not able to see that, they don't know. So I asked for a couple of billboards, electric billboards to go in O'Brien, one in Branford pointing to where it needed to go. Well, they started showing up, you know, and so things are better and, uh, you know, they just, they just need to know where to go. They don't know, they don't have any way of communicating. You get on my end of the county and shit, you can't talk to anyone. You're done.
You can't talk to anybody, it's hard with them. It ain't nothing unusual.
It's much better out where I'm at.
Yeah, it was that way on yesterday here in town. They have none, the towel down, oh, they have two towels down, yeah, you couldn't talk to anyone. You had Verizon or AT&amp;T.
We worked it out to get them around and, and we did some other things, radio, some other stuff and I think, I think it'll pick up. When I showed up in Branford this morning, they were fixing a pool guard, they were gonna turn us in a lot of water around and they were gonna shut it down this afternoon. And I was like, oh, that ain't happening, you know? So we got some volunteers there, which the guard's still there now, I don't know who made the call on that, but anyhow, they're still there. And we took some a lot of water and I asked for some ice and some other things and it's been handled. Uh, so, I mean, it's, it's, you just gotta be there, I don't know.
Yeah, just getting the word out.
You need to show up and, and, and see what's going on, that's all I can say.
Yeah, I think now we got some, the word out to some of the key people in the area to get, uh, them to at the Dubby Center and at the Coliseum, they're giving out, a lot of people got, kind of got it up, but some still have a problem getting through the roads. I mean, I was coming here today and, uh, I had run into a lot of dead ends trying to get over here, come through the area, so.
Man, you mentioned Coliseum, I was heading out there earlier and I'm telling you, it is back, and it's backing up the roundabout, trying to get it to the Coliseum.
So the word got out then, because
I went to there, by there this morning, early, and there was probably five cars in my way.
But there's probably about a hundred right now.
Well, they got it, that's the setup on the working, I don't know, some people getting in the night, they call, people say, "Hey, you got some water, while you can get it here."
But they gotta, we gotta, they're just, they're just driving through the, the thing they
I saw it as an elevator.
I need to tell you the staging on that.
So, so, that's, go back to what you said, Greg, I think that if we can, if, if FEMA or whoever, state, federal will sign off on letting us, you know, set up a few more pods, maybe Wellburn and another one in like McCalpin and maybe one in Bois Ranch area and one in Dillon Park, to try to spread this out because like, I know people that comes, get some water and probably need it badly, but when they get it to town and it's gonna be two hour wait to get it, it's like
So, so let me ask you this, and this is what I asked the FEMA people, but I told you people I would do. Tell me where, two things, one is, where's the best distribution areas in, in each community or in the communities? or in the communities? And two, if we have FEMA pods out there also to go and talk to those folks, where's the best places for those?
If you're asking my district, I would say you could, you could put one like it either Clayland Baptist Church, that's a voting precinct, that has a big looping drive around the backside cemetery, that which, where the precinct used to be in the back, back there, that's a big paved looping road, that would be a really good one, and it's, you know, that, if I said Dallin Park, well then, if we're talking about five mile circles, like fire station talks, that we talked about, well, three quarters of that circle was moving in a different county. So moving inward, so the folks from McCalpin area or Lurville area, and then the Dallin Park people could all feed toward the Clayland Baptist Church, but that would be my, probably central place, and I don't know about the rest of the...
One thing that we talked about today, and there is the Church of God in Dallin Park offering to be a site, if we wanted them to be, so...
If they're offering, I mean, that's fine, I was thinking about central location, and not stacking cars outside the highway.
The thought about doing something outside the village proper is, sometimes the Dallin Park people won't go into the village, you know, but the village people will go...
I would like, in my, I'm just gonna talk for my district, Clayland Baptist Church would probably be my pick, 'cause it's the most centrally located, and it's off of two fifty, it's not on two fifty, keeps people off from the major highway, has a loop.
Good point.
That's where I would probably go.
District four, Wellburn, that is, 'cause there's a little cut through road there, you see?
Ten eighty and ninety.
Commissioner Perkins?
Well, Douglas Center, Hill Park, and, and the Coliseum.
Okay. The Coliseum is so close to Douglas Center, I would thought we'd do a, depends on what we're doing.
Yeah.
Did they get a tree out there going to Douglas Center?
They, they did, and then there's, then there's Paralon.
Yeah, there's one over there.
There's still one, we're dealing with it.
They, they only got one, one of them, I haven't seen it.
I had, let's see, one in five.
So Douglas Hill. All right, Don?
So I know a lot of folks are already kind of accustomed to going to Mount Givlin Church, because that's where they give out every other Saturday there, so that might be, I would say the Voyager Ranch, but that's not really central.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
It's far to one side, although they would have water, power.
I was thinking, like you were thinking, people are already accustomed to going to there for county stuff, because that's a very precinct.
Yep, and same thing there too, but they, and you got that long road to get them in, off of the road, that's right, yep. And that's provided, I'm sure the churches don't mind, but just, we'll touch base with those guys, and honestly, for that church, probably the margin can still be your...
I'll talk to you.
About Watson, Baker Watson, Baker Watson.
Yes, absolutely, he handles a lot of it, Watson doesn't, I got his number too.
Sure.
Well, we haven't gotten it yet. Let, let me see.
Talk to FEMA's legislature all the time, just watch you five.
Right, sure.
Well, I got an issue going on, I'm gonna address it here in a minute. I called Ted Rouse this morning, he said the school was fine until further notice, but apparently the principal down there has decided that's a different deal now, so I don't know if we're gonna have to move that from where it's at.
I think, I think the superintendent is in charge.
Well, that's kind of what I thought, but I got the phone call while I was with the governor, and so I ain't had time to address it since then, but anywhere there, Brantford's fine, either at the fire station or at the school, if they gonna leave it there, whatever we gotta do there, and I don't know. Yeah, problem is, we got, you gotta have room to get people around down there, and that, the only guy at the school's working pretty good, 'cause there's a long paved road through there, and it keeps the traffic flowing. But we gotta deal with the school issue here at some point, so I don't know whether we're gonna have to shut that down and move it.
We're not leaning toward the eleventh opening back up again, so, but...
The eleventh? Wow.
Dr. Rosen, he's up in there.
He got power at school now.
Yeah, I think so, they're, they're... Yeah, their dirt roads, at least I ain't made them down yet.
Yeah, quite a few.
Oh, McCalpin Community Center, I guess, would be another good one, unless Travis thinks his is close enough to deal with it. I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna overwhelm with this stuff, you know what I'm saying?
Well, if we get lucky, just have one location in each district, I mean, that's better than everybody trying to come, the Coliseum, which I had the Coliseum where I could go, and so that, Mount Givlin would put them fellow out there, all those folks.
We talked about trying to get something in the north part of the county, just so that, I mean, that's a pretty good call.
Yeah.
But I'm hoping the water, the water needs it.
The Brantford barrier should be the highway. Any other questions for me about the needs that y'all got? I think company asked about tarps, they're trying to undig the water to get to the tarps, today I was talking to Cog, he was out of there, we're looking to move things around, so tarps will be available moving forward. I've got a few in my truck, everybody a few, if anybody needs any.
They sent these pallets of these orange water barriers, it looks like, you think they're tarps, but they're not, they're just like, plastic water barriers, they're heavy duty, but they're not tarps, I don't know why they sent those.
Is that kind of thing?
Yeah, I don't know where it came from.
Management, that might be preventative measures to keep water from disrising, you know, it's like sandbags would do.
There's a pallet of masks and, I don't know, masks, gloves, and I don't know what, 'cause I lift the lid, I'm like, what the hell do you need this for, whatever, you know?
Do they send tarps though? 'Cause I, I've seen so many people trying to talk up their houses, and you never know, maybe months before, adjusters and people can fix that kind of stuff.
Tarps are next to a hundred fifty, two hundred feet for a good one.
Biggest thing for me was I thought about ice, you know, we need ice.
Yeah, I talked to the guy, I used to build a lot of ice in town.
And they told, Bowles, Bowles told me that they were gonna send a truck to Brantford, and they may be sending one around here too, I don't know, but they're supposed to send a truck with fuel and gas to distribute and give out, and I was hoping, I don't think bringing that to the school to do it, but he told me they would be out, but I hadn't heard no more about it.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything about that.
This Diane, he is a Chris, she contacts me and the help, you know, she's, what she can do, or what they can do from there, from there they can be, well, help, I know it gets me by them boys to help load and move stuff.
One thing we need is volunteers or people to work a shelf or a distribution area, Senator and representative, and we had a representative from further west of the Piscopo area, I can't remember her name, Michelle, she was here today, and they, they're generating, sending stuff over from legislators, and they hooked us up with Church of God, and they'll be doing that Sunday from one to four, like, appreciate his, his help on that, but hopefully volunteers should do that, so you can get the word out to folks that Sunday they'll be doing that also, in addition to what the other things are going on. I think, from what Liam was saying yesterday, there should be some formal and that kind of stuff, I think, I don't want to overspeak and say, put it out there and not happen, because that's worse than telling people it's there. But if we know more, we'll try to get that out too. I've been trying to keep y'all updated via text, but I tell you, and I apologize for train service and, you know, all I'm doing is blowing this phone up all day long, and my thumbs are wore out, because I can't do it like some of the other people do.
And I hate bothering you, but I mean, just, the whole idea, like you said, is just getting that information out there, guys, and it's the thing, I say some things I don't think of, I've had to get with Greg, you know, and some of you guys are farmers, but lives, you don't think about that, and they don't have water for those things, and it's just crazy.
It's good, so they have water for them.
Talk about farmers, I got farmers and pivots that, that need, their crops need water, and they need power to run it.
We have, had pivots tip over too.
We got a bunch of rate pivots, so.
So that, they're aware of that, that we're having those issues, getting, in all fairness, getting generators to pivots and that kind of stuff, it's gonna be challenging, I don't know how we can do private stuff, if we can, that's great, I'm all for it, but...
Is USDA involved, or they helping with some of these things?
We ain't got that far yet.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sure they will, so I haven't heard, they haven't shown up yet, or, but...
I was giving the guy's number supposedly gave him USDA, but that, it's not, I'm trying to check.
To answer that question, Greg, and I don't mean to speak overly broad here, but essentially during the declaration of the state of emergency, there's limits, but you can kind of do what you want, so long as the county makes the finding, like if you're looking there about the roads, it's important for the health and security of the citizenry, therefore we're gonna do X, so if we can get a finding of the board as to that, you can do whatever you want.
Well, to me, the economic factor, I mean, for the governor's office and Department of Commerce saying, "We wanna know why the businesses aren't functioning," same with the farmer, "we gotta know what's their issue, is their business also, you know, big and hard, probably industry in our, in our community," but, you know, we gotta make sure that we do what we can for those folks, because...
So we can do that, I mean, we can, literally, we can do that right now, the board wants to make that finding, if I'm hearing it correctly, that we have some private businesses that for the job security and the maintenance of all that, for the health and security of the citizenry of the county, it's important that perhaps some public funds be sent to help them for electric purposes while the electricity's down, may require the use of public funds, that would be a worthwhile public use, private use of public funds to enable that, am I stating that awkwardly but correctly?
Yes.
All right, so I would need a motion of the board to make that finding, and to authorize the county administrator then to act on it, and then he has the power to do what he wants.
So on the heels of that, I'm just asking, I know all you guys have, and I have in my district, but unfortunately, I just don't know how it works, how are they, how are they watering these chicken houses, how are they taking care of these?
Generators and our tanks. It's not as old as we're doing, we're having a load of a nurse tank that we usually...
You probably use your fuel in the same way?
Yeah, so they're filling nurse tanks and filling couch halls, because power's not there to flood the couch hall, ain't working.
They'll, they'll understand, and I agree that we should do this, where we can, the thing we have to be careful of is, think about how many farmers we got out there, and it's not just, when it comes to generator, you gotta have leads, you gotta have it hooked up, you gotta have transfer switch, you gotta have these pieces that make things happen, because of the size of the operation, you know, it's bigger than just...
And I think those guys, like they're saying, they already have those things in place, I think it's more of your smaller folks that maybe have a couple goats, chickens, cows, and things like that, they're the ones that, that's the cause I'm getting, I'm not necessarily getting a bunch of it from the farmers themselves.
I just wanna get the water from, couldn't see they also get water, but more, I mean, it comes on that reclaimed water from the sewer system.
I'll approach that with, with Larry, I knew that when Don and I talked yesterday about the farmers, I said Larry'd be a good point.
I love your message, but I hadn't heard from him.
He was on it this morning.
Okay, okay.
But, but the whole reuse thing came up, and it's like, I imagine Cal would do a reuse for the first year, but it's pretty good, anything else, but...
Was there a motion?
I didn't, there was no motion.
There's always a motion, yeah.
Do we want, do we want to go down that road, is what I'm asking.
I don't, I don't think we need to. I don't think, no, I don't think yet. I think we need to wait a day.
I just think that turns into a...
You're about to piss in somebody, y'all.
Well, you do, for what you gotta do for everybody, number one, number two, you gotta deal with generators, like you said, you got leads that's gotta be hooked up, somebody gets fried doing that kind of stuff, I don't want it to be back on us, so I would say we all tie them up.
Yeah, yeah, I agree a hundred percent, 'cause I think that, you got a bunch of people that are back feeding and don't know what the difference is, so I would send our guys out there, just there right away, get our electrical line, go to pivots, or what the drunks are doing anyway, and then that, being back fed is hot.
What's that, Liam?
Oh, he said it was in the resolutions, so we're good.
Not liking somebody got some roads that people can't get in and out of.
Yeah, yeah, it's already in there.
It's already in there.
But I, I...
Y'all have one, that somebody can't get in and out of, now's the time, go exit.
Or, and it even applies to, you know, if the storm ate on a road, where the, the ruts are now making impassable, you could go ahead and throw some line across the neighborhood.
But I think we're good where we at right now.
I think we gotta go to the county ward, if everybody, if you want, generate the type of fine generates everybody in this time, and again, just, and I don't want somebody to wire the thing up, unless they have electricity.
As long as we got a place where...
They probably have...
Whether it's that reclaimed water, or like you said, extension office, but you hitting so much going on out there right now.
Didn't they bring feed and stuff in too?
They were supposed to have brought some in, and put it in the arena, Jason called me the other day, I said, "Find them to do that," so I, I don't know the details of that, I'll let those that deal that arena take care of that, but on the water, the extension office is, and I think I sent out a text, again, with the, with the extension is the contact there.
I'll, I'll share that I was at Swan Valley Electric twice already today, they have a very large tent set up, they got three hundred people already on site, another five hundred will be here this afternoon, Lyman coming in, they got, they got a contractor on site out there, that's from Kentucky, they have probably fifteen or twenty reaper traders with food and water and supplies set up, place to house, a shower, bathrooms all set up, sleeping quarters set up, I mean, it's, they're doing, in my opinion, they're doing a fantastic job, I know some of the people in the public can beat them up a little bit, but when you see the amount of damage that's been done out there, and they got a whole fleet in Brunswick that, that are now mobilizing, are heading this way, that's, that's...
I said, well, come in, yesterday I was up on that east, yesterday in the lake, there was a bunch of trucks coming in at end, but, you know, I think too, that people gotta get missed and screwed by, but all the pieces of pull to take to operate, is they, I had a chance to do with Greg out there at the ELC building, and then see all the pieces that's working out to get everything working to get this thing, just where we are now.
Yeah, well, day two, I mean, there's gonna be patient, we're on day two.
People giving a lot of them.
I'm not gonna lose all of them, I'm not gonna...
Ain't longer than that, that's for sure.
Yeah, you know, a lot of them losing sleep and not getting sleep, because, you know, trying to get this thing going, and all the departments working hard, I mean, they...
You're right.
And they going out there, and I still, out at the Douglas Center, I came before coming here, everybody just saying, "Thank y'all for y'all work, man, y'all doing..."
Absolutely.
Ladies and men out there working hard, and instead of late nights trying to get this power on, but it's not even a task, it's not a problem too.
FPL, they've got a mutual aid agreement now with Swan Valley, so they're fixing to cut their crews loose, they're going to Swan Valley, so it's due, is what I understand, so that's all fixing to happen too.
Yeah, so she had called us morning, said, um, give her name, lady from FPL, said there'd be ninety-five percent today, completing here, Carol, yeah, ninety-five percent complete day, and she will, they'll be here if we still need them, and they, other that they haven't got to that trees in the way, or their lines are down because of power, put up their homes, they caught grinding, that they would get them a little bit later, but they'll, they'll stay at that five percent and be left, but ninety-five percent today should be done with them, so they'll, they'll move on.
They're gonna run lower than Swan Valley.
The one, the one thing that Swan Valley did, and I know that Florida Power did also, Florida Power sort of different clientele journey than Swan Valley does, but first thing was just reconnaissance, see what they had to do.
Yeah.
And if they can't, if they can't get there, with the roads, with the debris and everything on the roads, that's what the National Guard was doing, and we started doing, and so, I hadn't had a chance to, I didn't wanna keep calling my guys and slow them down, what they're doing, to find out, Mike said it went good yesterday, and we're doing progress, good.
They're doing a great job, too, I've been out there with them, they're doing a phenomenal job.
Mississippi tags are everywhere around.
And Sherwood about the, what I call it, what it's cameras.
Right, so, we've got, you know, folks, you know, trying to scam us, we've got, you know, "I'm gonna do this tree job for you," whatever, "I'm just gonna caution this, this," but it's like, you know, FEMA's gonna, we'll reimburse you later, but it's gonna be twelve, you know, two or five hundred dollars today, take that, one of them down, and that just, you keep record of it, and you can get reimbursement from FEMA or whatever, that ain't gonna happen. But we've got professional business revolution folks coming in, they're gonna be house probably the chamber, to go, kind of go after those guys, to kind of see what they're doing, you know, I appreciate the folks coming in to help us recover, I know that Don and I have talked to us quite a bit, but we've got some of our local suppliers, or tree guys especially, that, "Well, I haven't used me, we hear that you're contracting these, all these houses..." We hear that you're contracting these, all these outside people and everything, that's just not the case. Um, and, you know, some of them, you know, they grow this stuff which we greatly appreciate, then what, said, well, don't they get reimbursed? It's like, that's not the way it works. So the way, just so I'm clear, we talked about the debris removal before. And we, there's a team that, the emergency management worked with before, that they recommended us using from Louisiana, which brings in their crew and others. Um, and then we had another crew I was looking at out of Gainesville. Um, and they also have a contract with, um, Lafayette County. Um, and I was on the phone, they, anyway, we got, we worked, Adam, Adam worked into the night on Tuesday, Wednesday night.
As the storm was coming.
Right, yeah. Uh, to try to get all that, worked out ahead of time. Emails back and forth that, that night trying to get the contract ready. Um, I got a call at one thirty that night, whatever night it was, maybe Tuesday night, that, um, the numbers that were given to the chairman and I, when we were talking to, to Chris about things. Liberty County, which is comparable demographics to us in some respects, was, he said, it might be a couple million dollars, whatever, to foot the bill on the cleanup. Couple million dollars, you had Keith and Brandon, a couple million dollars that we're gonna get back, twenty percent now, eighty percent in a year or so. You know, that would kill us. Um, would be painful, would kill us. I got a call later, I said that he misspoke, it was twenty million dollars, wasn't a million dollars, not two million dollars. Twenty million dollars, us holding back for that for twenty years is unacceptable. We just, you just can't do that. We got too many grants, we're, we'll be floating and that's just a lot of money. So, so I heard and I knew that people, some of the people, with the one, one guy who was working with, I felt, I feel was bad because I got a call from, um, they talked to the Cap, Capex office about speeding up the refunding process. And we can't guarantee a damn thing. We can't be holding back from twenty million dollars. Anyway, they talked to the representatives, representatives called representatives, representatives called me. I'm like, this is the, and then there's like, do you have approval, what do you mean? And I said, no, 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 this is the facts. I was telling Don, these guys that are complaining because we're using outside contractors, we're not using anybody. We're contracting with the state to do the job. The state will find contractors to do the work. They're bid, the state's taking bids or has taken bids to do state work. You know, we're just, you let the state come in, do our work for us. Where our guys can keep on working on what we need to do, whether it's roads or other things we're doing. Um, and get this, we got a call early in the week, that they will come next week and do chip seal.
Yeah.
Of course I did. Of course I did.
Um, so one thing I would like to add, Mr. Perkins, is you guys are getting calls about scammers. Forward that information to me, I can do something about that. I mean, I've got contacts and have a, both in law enforcement. And then especially if they're representing, we're here on behalf of the county, I can get a cease and desist out of me.
There's a group, I think, there's a group today, I know the Baptist Association, they come in and do tarping or clearing up trees or whatever. And they have the yellow shirts on. And the guy said, sometimes the guys in yellow shirts will follow them and say, you know, you know, we did it for free, but we'd like to have a donation. So that's not what they do, but, you know, anytime you got a disaster, you got people who want to take advantage of somebody.
Sure, sure.
But, uh, I'll hush, you know, if you, if you need more information, I'll try to do a better job of getting, getting information out to you. If you got anything that comes up, complaints, whatever, concerns you've got, let me know so I can address it. Um, but, um.
And just, not, Mr. Greg, but talking about our local guys, you know, cleaning up and all, I would love to have that opportunity then. So have whatever avenue is, if we can get them a portal, get them a contact, uh, so we can start pushing on that way. Cause I know we all have folks in our, our area that get.
I didn't want to cut anybody out. I really wanted to go the route where the guy Greg had set up in Gainesville, because he was gonna use our local folks to do that. When, when they started talking about twenty million dollars and we was gonna be on the hook for that, I was like, whoa, no. We need to, we need to go a different route here. And that's when the whole state offered to do their thing and then we're not on the hook for the money and they're gonna, so.
I think it'll be more than that.
Oh, it's gonna be a lot. I don't know if y'all got to see one of them contracts, but that's about an inch. It isn't a lot.
I'm just gonna use the size of some of these trees I've seen, about an inch.
Oh, like a hundred and something dollars per inch of tree. Get rid of, and then so much a yard to dump it, so much a yard to haul it, it'll be under risk. Yeah. It's quite the thing.
Greg, I have one question.
Be careful.
Cause while we have the board here, the board complains, is there any power or anything that you need? Cause you're the point, Russell, is there anything that you need?
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, today, Chris came to me, the letter worked. Chris came to me and it was, uh, message boards, about thirty thousand dollars apiece. And, um, he said, you know, we need to get more messages out there and stuff. And really, that's about the only way to get the message out there right now, message boards. And he said, you know, we'll have to buy those, about thirty thousand dollars apiece, we'll get reimbursed for those. You know, I need your authorization to do forward. And I said, go. Um, and then five minutes later, I got word that state said, don't worry about anything you're spending, cause you're gonna get reimbursed for it. Well, we did, let me explain this too. Well, we did ask for also from, from the state is, all this mutual aid we're getting, they could build us and we reimburse them, they get reimbursed for it. And it is a fairly fast term for the state mutual aid. Instead, we've asked for and received where the, I'm ninety-five percent received, I made, I don't want to miss that. Misspeak, but all that aid that we're getting, all this stuff, all the resources that's coming in, National Guard, the, the law enforcement, all those pieces, it's gonna be all billed through the state. So we will touch that.
Well, I, I agree that, I mean, you know, I'm glad to hear that because I, I think, not only looking at what are we doing now to fix this and to speed up the process and to take care of our community, but I think if those things are there and we need to have those, you know, for future. I mean, obviously, we've just been lucky, but, you know, what if I happen to get it later this year?
We got several, several sold that.
I mean, so if we can learn now, if we had this, this, this support from the state, let's get what we need, let's take care of the community and let's.
I don't want to be greedy, but let's get what we need.
That's right, absolutely.
Let's get what we need.
Well, and, and the folks we're working with are helping us learn.
Yeah.
How to ask the questions differently. And I like doing it that way.
Yeah, that's why I came down, I said, Pastor Campbell, God, came in, they got us took over that, the EOC over there. And it's one of those, they, you know, they, quickly know this stuff. You know, they, a lot we can learn from them is what y'all are saying, you gotta prepare now for. Hopefully don't have to use it, but just in case, you never know.
Yeah, this is a lot of experience. For me, I mean, I'm gonna tell you, it's pretty good. You know, I went up there when they started the EOC thing and been there six, the last few days, but I'm gonna tell you. It, that's, that's an overwhelming task rather, rather, when you got all that coming at you that fast. It's, it's, uh, it's up north.
And the, the resources that we're, we're getting, just talking to, I don't know if it's Tim or Eddie. And those guys have done a really good job too, but anyway, um, there's an electronics, the group here is doing communication pieces. I don't know all the details, I don't even know it. But, um, they had a problem with something, with a tower or something. And they told these guys, they said, we got a guy, we'll fix it for you. This is tower stuff, not, not just radios. Shannon's talking, went back and talked to them, we're gonna get sixty or more handholds that we can use.
That's great.
And, and it's just, I can't tell you enough, the relationships we've developed already in the past with Simon and Shove and the other partners we've met with and dealt with, um, even Florida Power. When they walk in the door, they know who you are and they wanna help you. And it is tremendous what I'm seeing. And it's a, one phone call makes the world change. What Shove shared with us yesterday is, if you got, this state's like, we can handle it easily. He said, but if you got a problem with a, with a contract, you know, Verizon, whatever, he said, let me know. Cause we can deal with them too. Cause they, they're gonna tell Hasty for a paycheck too.
Absolutely.
So, um, but that's, the relationships we're developing over time is, it's just, it's just paying off in time. And I, I'll, I'll, y'all, y'all, y'all know the drill, but, um, if you need anything from me, don't hesitate. I'm proud of our people that stepped up. I mean, Mac and, Mac and, um.
Robin.
Mike was out today riding and looking, trying to assess kind of things. Um, we're getting, Robin hooked up with FEMA guys, that I'm showing where the trouble areas are in access and those friendly people. Um, that sort of thing. Um, we're, you know, Ron has been there. I text Jason Ron, said, I'm gonna need you, and Jimmy, I said, I'm gonna need you. They said, when, you know, when? And, you know, you can't do it by itself and, and everybody's willing to do anything they need to do. Um, I got a call, I got a call or a text, something from Carol, and she said, we got people ready to go if you need us. So it's kind of pretty cool, but.
Well, I'm pretty proud of the citizens.
It's not a county thing, it's a community thing.
Absolutely. You, you look back and you look at some disasters and people are just sitting there waiting on the garbage, you know? Our people don't do that. I mean, they were loading the roads out, cleaning them out, I mean, yeah.
They're all pushing them out.
That's pretty, that's something to be proud of, right?
What's that song, slow down?
There you go. We need to, when we, when we get to a point, is go back and, and celebrate our successes and find a way to recognize folks as a whole. Because that's what you're proud about, our community, where there's a need, we come together.
That's what you look at, neighbor helping neighbor. Hey, if you need to get out of chainsaw and clean the road out, get it earned up, I mean, that's.
Y'all know y'all ain't never seen me all scratched up and beat up, look at it.
Our guys.
Yeah.
You think your wife does that?
Yeah.
Did you tell her you should cut the tree long and she hit you with it or?
Listen how to drag trees, just get like you does, just get out of her own driveway.
Yeah.
Anybody got anything big enough to move that tree in my yard, let me know. I got about four foot diameter pecan tree. There's probably an eight foot hole or a public out.
It is funny though, when you have the right equipment to move something, like I was down on Bois Ranch Road with my two fifty. I cut a tree in half and it's gonna be just, I've been moving twenty trees that day. I could not move this thing. And here comes one of those guys, you're talking about, went to our community with his tractor. Just picks out, I think I got like, it's nothing.
It was a Ford, right?
Uh, the tractor was, yeah, the tractor was, yeah.
Yeah.
Did you get yours out of the barn? I seen that picture, you got a barn laying on top of your tractor.
That's all still right there, I'm waiting on the insurance company.
Got you.
You, y'all talking about the community working together, what I think you can measure by, well, since, uh, I was out there at, um, Murphy getting gas. And the best, the KFC gets some, some food with people. And some people not pushing and shoving and getting nothing and then the gas thing, I mean, it was low line, we'd get gas out in the road. And, uh, you know, people that was, they don't understand it. You know, one time, you know, I said to my brother, they're also, man, it's kind of scary. If you pull out gun, wanna shoot and all kind of stuff here.
You get that shirt on.
I'm not sure that.
Also.
But anyway, that's good.
Can we get them through while we're in the disaster?
What's that?
Shirt's not wearing, yeah.
Just getting to make a fun.
But I, I had for Leo, he goes, but I thought he was trying. I was, well, you see, man, the, man, maybe take any shirts, right? You tell her, he always get me, yeah, man, she get a book.
All, all good, I don't want to say thank you to each one of y'all, I know y'all been working your butts off, man. Frank, I appreciate everything you're doing out there.
Thanks, sir.
Greg, I appreciate you.
I can tell Joe.
All our staff and.
Well, I feel obligated to do it and I like doing it. It's fun, I don't mind, you know, I'm trying to balance between business and doing what I'm doing here.
Yeah, that's a job.
We're good, man.
So everyone else has been engaged and that's important.
Yeah, and I think, I was talking about, I think that's, uh, credit a lot of it because if I shown up at those meetings, we have all five being there, you know, and I think that, that impacted them a lot. That's why it was, we've built relationships with people to help us out, you know? Everybody even turning in there with us too.
I just like, all our guys, all our employees.
I forgot to adjourn this one. Are we done?
I'm done.
I mean, just maybe if you could, on the, on Tuesday, get a picture of you having put the notice on the board that it's, we're redoing it for, for Thursday. So that way, somebody shows up at the time and never.
That's one of these all.
Is that it? Everything want to get?
Both of them.
Why don't you do a adjourn?
Second.
Second, I'll play Ron.
Aye.